All right. So, Mickey, you just let us know when you're ready to go. And you may want to bring up the pictures of our Zoom participants. Well, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure they were somewhere on the board. Yeah, so I can see if they want to speak or whatever.
Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, if you'd like to call the meeting to order?
Great. Thank you so much and welcome, everyone, to today's Reno City Council meeting. This is a special meeting. We had to cancel our meeting last Wednesday due to the Davis fire. And I just wanted to start by saying our hearts go out to all those affected by the fire. Our hearts also go out to all those who worked to combat the fire, whether it was our Reno Fire Organization, Truckee Meadows, the Humboldt-Toyahby Forest Service Teams, Incident Type 1 Teams, our RMSA groups, our emergency responders of all type. We're incredibly grateful to the response they did. Because of them, very little of our community was affected as compared to what could have been. We were talking about evacuations all the way up to Huffaker, potentially up to McCarran. The fire was contained. They did a remarkable job. They just posted their last update yesterday, saying it was 92% contained. And they're right in the final mop-up. And I know that they're handing over the fire response to our local responders. So they are departing our community because we're no longer in that type of acute emergency state. But we couldn't be more grateful. And I know that several thank-yous are planned. Some have already begun at the Reno Aces with funds that are being collected to help those affected by the fire. I think that's three days in a row. There are other events, and I want to give you a hold the date for October 8th. I hear there's something in the works. I don't know any details. It will be an evening event, where it is, what it is. But I know that people will want to participate and come out to show their appreciation to the tremendous response that we received. So, and I know I see we have some firefighters in the last row here. So, thank you to both of you. I know that our Reno teams are actually eager to go fight the fire. I happened to visit Station 12 during the fire, and that's down on Steamboat Parkway in South Reno. And they were itching to get into the game. They wanted to show their stuff, I know. But most of our firefighters were kept fighting fires here locally. And we also had visiting teams from Clark County, Henderson, Las Vegas, come up and help with our local firefighting to backfill people that were fighting the fire. So, again, for those listening and those in the audience, thank you so much for everything our community did to pull together in response to this fire. So, I just wanted to start out that way. This morning, we have a relatively short meeting, we think. Again, it's a special meeting. A number of our members are on Zoom this morning. So when we call roll, you'll hear that. And then there'll be announcements on how to make public comment. And before we begin public comment, we'll be having a special presentation. So with that, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask my colleague, Councilmember Taylor, to lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, calling roll for Thursday, September 19th. Councilmember Breckus?
I am here.
Dour?
Here.
Martinez?
Mr. Martinez, are you?
Is absent, oh.
Oh.
Ebert, absent at this time. Taylor?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Shivi?
Here.
Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thank you so much. And we're going to start with public comment. And before we get into public comment, I know we have a special presentation. And if I could call up our interim city manager, Jackie Bryant, to help us, walk us through that and let us know what's happening.
Good morning, thank you. It's my pleasure, on behalf of Mayor Shivi, along with Ms. Kelly Helsel here, to read this proclamation for you. Whereas the Association of Frontotemporal Degeneration, AFTD, reports that FTD is a terminal and incurable neurodegenerative disease affecting the frontal and temporal lobes, causing impairments to speech, personality, behavior, and motor skills, which constitutes a major public health concern. And whereas it takes an average of 3.6 years from start of symptoms to get an accurate diagnosis, it may strike people between the ages of 21 and 80, with the largest percentage of those affected being between 45 and 64, rendering people in the prime of life unable to work or function normally. And whereas FTD represents an estimated 5% to 15% of all dementia cases and is the most common form of dementia for people under 60 and is often misdiagnosed as a psychiatric problem or other neurodegenerative disease because of the wide range of cognitive and behavioral symptoms. And whereas the disease dramatically impacts the lives of 60,000 people and their loved ones in the United States. Now therefore, I, Hillary Shivi, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby declare September 22nd through 29th, 2024, Frontotemporal Degeneration Awareness Week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And did you have any comments to add today? Oh, please do.
I'm Kelly Helsel, and I was a nurse for 27 years. And I was blessed with getting married to a wonderful man that I will keep silent for his name for dignity. But he was diagnosed with frontal lobe dementia, behavioral variant, which means he didn't know the difference between right and wrong. He never asked, "Why me?" He said he wanted to make a difference and he wanted to find a cure. So he donated his brain and his spine to UCSF.
My goodness.
In that, we're hoping to raise awareness for resources because Reno has no resources. We want doctors to be able to diagnose quicker, family practice doctors to be able to diagnose quicker, family members to recognize symptoms that are abnormal, that we just associate with growing old and age-related. It was the most horrific disease I've ever seen. He was in terminal agitation, and it went on forever. I felt like I needed to do something to be his voice, to raise awareness about this and to hopefully raise awareness for this community because there are so many people not getting diagnosed. It took us five years to get him diagnosed correctly. The average time is three to seven years to get a proper diagnosis. And that's not okay. And families go through a lot. And doctors don't even know about the disease. So the Frontal Lobe Dementia Association is a great resource that I'm hoping to share, becoming an outreach coordinator for them and going in and sharing this information for them so they can better take care of these patients and maybe a dream of having a facility where they can go.
Wow. Well, very inspiring. Thank you for your work, and I'm so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
But I'm glad that we could recognize this day on behalf of you, your husband, and the many other sufferers that are probably in our community still yet undiagnosed.
Yes, and I want to thank the mayor and Brian, her assistant. They have been wonderful, and it's taken a year to get here. But it was well worth it because I feel like he at least didn't die for no reason.
Yeah. Well, I hear you on that.
Thank you.
And I don't know, Mayor Shivi, if you had anything to add?
Yeah, I do.
Since it's so instrumental?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I don't know, it's going in and out over here. Kelly, I want to say thank you so much for your advocacy because she's right, this is incredibly complex and it goes misdiagnosed. I did a lot of research on it, but then I found out that I knew someone personally that has been through this horrific, horrific journey. You would not wish this on your worst enemy. And you guys know the reason that we do this, it's so important. There are other people out there struggling silently or don't even know that they've been diagnosed yet with this type of front lobe dementia. It's really, it's really complex. And oftentimes, we will dismiss the diagnosis as a mental illness. It's just incredibly, incredibly sad. It is just beyond painful. I watched a documentary on it, and I just encourage everyone because as we get older, all of us, you know, people, it comes with some stigmas, and sometimes that's just not the case, like Kelly said, you know, completely dismissed. So I just want to say thank you so much, Kelly, for your advocacy because as, you know, a caregiver and as a wife, I cannot even imagine how difficult it has been. I mean, it's difficult to care. Many of us know, like Naomi knows this, Kathleen knows this. It's difficult to care for an aging parent, let alone a spouse, right? And an aging parent can be super difficult and complex, let alone having, you know, something of this magnitude. So I just want you to know that our hearts go out to you and keep fighting. This is so important because then others won't feel alone. And because of your journey, it will be so much easier for them to survive it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and I hope you feel better.
Thanks so much. I didn't want to come and get anyone sick today, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, our heart goes out to you and your family and all of those suffering. We're going to turn now to public comment. And I would like to ask the clerk to read our public comment disclosure.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Our first item today is public comment. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you state your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council Rule 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter today is Terry Brooks, followed by Ann Kent.
All right, welcome, Terry. We're looking forward to your next installment here.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today's presentation is about so-called classes and economics when it comes to discrimination. Upper-class people are so wealthy, they don't have to work much for money. They can usually make investments that make them even more money. The upper class own a lot of businesses that hire a lot of people. And that way, they make a lot of profit from the work of lower-class people. The more money that they make, the more money they can invest. And then they make even more from the money that they invest. They may start out having a few million dollars, which expand into assets of having a few billion dollars. The middle class have usually had to work for what they own, and it takes a little longer for their assets to have grown. They may invest in some real estate where they themselves will be living and work 40 hours every week just to make a living. The middle class may get to invest a small percentage of their wage. And with Social Security, they may get to retire at a certain age. Of all the work and investments made by the middle class, about half of it was actually received by the upper class. It's the lower class of people who are usually oppressed. They're fortunate if they live on what they make and have little to invest. They are less likely to own their own homes and sometimes too poor to rent. Whatever income they may have made was probably quickly spent. They may have a problem when it comes to bills they have to pay, and they just do whatever they can to make it from day to day. When they wind up losing their jobs during a time of inflation, they may wind up out on the street and facing the fear of starvation. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back because I got a lot more to say.
All right, thank you, Terry. Great, as always.
Ann Kent?
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Ann Kent. I've lived in Reno 30 years, 20 years as a senior citizen. I'll be 80 the end of October on my way to the year 2044. People are living longer, and I'm sure you've noticed. For the last 15 years, I've received scholarships every year in the amounts of 75%, 60%, and 40%. I have all those letters here that were sent to me letting me know I qualified for a scholarship so that I could attend programs like nutrition, Tai Chi, Sit and Fit, Bingo, and card games. Scholarships were the allowance of $500 a year for us who qualified, based on income. My income has never been more than $2,200 a month. Not a lot, but with the scholarships from the City of Reno, I could attend those programs. They have given me free or decreased costs to activities like Tai Chi, Sit and Fit, Bingo, card games. They also allowed for decreased fees for brunch and a movie or El Dorado shows or even trips to Alphill. And there's a new program called Engaged, monitored by Isabella Baumann, on its way to providing regular free events for us seniors. She does care about us seniors, and I want to believe that you do, too. Please retain the scholarships for seniors using parks and recreation programs and events. I happen to hear that AARP was given a couple of million dollars. I don't have anything to back that up, but I hear it.
Okay.
What happened to all the scholarship money? I would like to be able to use it. Thank you.
Ann, thank you so much for coming today. And I'd like to recommend that you get with Norma Santoyo. She is actually in the back right here when you walk out. And she can help get you re, as you said, engaged with the scholarship program or something similar.
Thank you.
Can I just weigh in for a second, Vice Mayor?
Sure.
I feared that these scholarships were going to go away. And that was always the caveat, that when we looked at these fees, that there would always be in place. And we did allocate quite a bit of money to, from ARPA for our senior programs. That was really, really important. So I appreciate you coming today and letting us know because that will not be acceptable.
Yeah.
We need you to continue on with your health, your programs, and being around other seniors in our community. So I just want you to know that. And I think you are adorable. So thanks for coming today.
Yeah. It took some courage.
Thank you.
To come here and present, which is always challenging. But it's not our intent to get rid of these programs. And Norma's here to help you and other seniors that need help through that pathway.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norma Santoyo, interim Assistant City Manager. Just for the record, we still have the scholarship program. So we'll go ahead and provide that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Thank you, thank you.
Robin Palmer via Zoom.
Ms. Palmer, I see your hands raised, and you've been led into the room if you want to speak. And it's nice to see you at our meeting. I had the opportunity to visit with you, was it, earlier this week? Seems like a generation ago, but here you go. Robin, can you hear us? We're not hearing you. So, Madam Clerk, we may have to work out a fix here.
Robin, you have to accept the request, the authority to speak. So there should be a button that pops up that says, "Go ahead," that says, "Okay."
Okay. While we're figuring that out, why don't we go on to our next speaker?
We don't have any additional speakers, Madam Vice Mayor. So for the record, I'll just say that we did receive 18 comments, which are general in nature, not directly associated with an agenda item, prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, September 18th. These comments were voicemail and/or written correspondence received via our reno.online public comment form or by emails to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on reno.gov/meetings. Five in favor, five in opposition, and eight letters of concern.
Okay. And then maybe when you get the technical issues worked out, we can bring Robin back later in the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. So we're moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
All right. So I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda. But let me ask our acting or interim city manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved.
Okay. A motion from Ms. Taylor, second from Mr. Reese. Any comments on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. And we are now moving on to the consent agenda. We don't have minutes for this meeting to approve. So let me ask, I'm going to start on Zoom. And let me ask if any member would like to take an item off the list, and I'll start to my left, which is Ms. Breckus.
No.
No. Ms. Shivi? Madam Shivi? Madam Mayor?
No.
No. Mr. Reese?
Nothing, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Ebert?
No.
Okay. All right, and then we'll go back to the dais here. Mr. Martinez?
Nothing from me, Madam Vice Mayor.
And Ms. Taylor?
Nothing, Madam Vice Mayor.
All right. With that, I have one item I'd like to pull off, which is B16.
Move to approve all remaining items.
What's that?
I move to approve all remaining items with the exception of B16.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Mr. Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And let me ask, Madam Clerk, I didn't know if there was any public comment on the consent.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We did not have any public comment on those items.
Okay, great. Well, we'll turn to item B16, as pulled by myself. And I'm not asking for a rendition of the resolution. I just want to acknowledge, it seemed like a good point time to acknowledge, that heretofore, for the last 10 years, South Reno has been part of Ward 2. And with the redistricting, giving all of the council members an equal number of residents within their ward and establishing the sixth ward, we went through an entire process and established Ward 6 to start basically in the southernmost portion of Ward 2 and move up to about Huffaker, roughly. And within that, even some areas that had been previously in Ward 3, like Cyan, would be moving into the new Ward 6. So I just, so many people have asked me about this that I want to, they already think it's happened, for the most part. It has not happened. It will happen after the election in November. And as part of that, we're going to establish new NAB for Ward 6. Now, some of the members on Ward 2 NAB are already from South Reno. So they all have an opportunity to stay on the NAB they're on until their term runs out. They can leave at this time, when we establish the new ward and sign, ask to be appointed to a new NAB. And that's going to affect quite a few NAB members. I know members from Ward 1 have already approached me because Ward 2 will now extend north to the Truckee River. So Idlewild Park, for example, would now be in Ward 2. Collin Ranch would now be in Ward 2. So people that have been serving on the NAB or interested in the NAB, I want to encourage those people to begin applying for Ward 2. So we've heard that several of the people want to go down south, and some people's terms are up on Ward 2. So positions are open. And I just wanted to kind of make a public announcement about that and also thank our staff because they very proactively went out to improve the bylaws for all the NABS as well as establish this new NAB. And I think they're doing a tremendous job on this. We have some great attendance at Ward 2, and people are really interested in what's going on in our community. And so I encourage anyone listening and anyone here that if you're interested in joining a NAB, I highly encourage you to do so. It provides a window into what the entire city is working on, its development projects, its police reports, fire reports. It is special projects. For example, the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan came. Title 18, which is our development code, is coming. You can learn an awful lot about what's going on in the city. Another great place is the Reno Citizen Institute, which I know we're trying to do once a year, I think, still. And so I encourage, that's a way to kind of get a glimpse into all the departments. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve item B16.
Second.
All right. Any further comments on this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously with myself making a motion and Ms. Taylor seconding. All right, we're going to move on to public hearings. And the first one up is C1, which covers our City of Reno Firefighters Local 731 Association and their contract, so.
Madam Vice Mayor, would you open the public hearing, please?
Yes, I'd like to open the public hearing. And let me just see here. Give me one second. All right. Let me ask this, too, as we're opening the public hearing. Do any council members have to, want to make any disclosures? None? None on Zoom?
Can you have to?
And then any at the dais? Okay. And then, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
So, Madam Mayor, let the record reflect, or Madam Vice Mayor, let the record reflect that we're opening the public hearing on item C1.
Yep.
Proper notice was given on this item, and no correspondence was received.
Okay, very good. So we have no public comment either?
No, ma'am.
Okay, either here or on Zoom?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we're ready for the presentation.
Excellent, good morning. I'm here in council. Jesse Puet, Labor Relations Manager. For the record, here to present the Labor Negotiations Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Reno and the International Association of Firefighters Local 731. That's a mouthful, so we'll shorten it to IAFF 731, Local 731. This aligns with your strategic plan goals of public safety and governance and organizational effectiveness. This covers about 300 employees, this bargaining group. We've come to a one-year agreement with the bargaining group with two salary increases. There's a 6% increase effective in July of '24 and a 3% increase effective January of 2025. That's more of a classification and compensation adjustment. Some other economic items that are included in this agreement are an expansion of education pay eligibility for all individuals in the bargaining group. This establishes an incentive to act as a safety and training officer. This is a assignment that requires some training and more due diligence, incorporating that work and doing that work. We also have an adjustment for an operator's assistant pay from a single dollar to a percentage. That dollar has been in place for decades, to my understanding. Moving it to a percentage makes it more equivalent to what we see out in the field and on the market. The total cost for this one-year agreement is roughly $3.3 million. I have a recommended motion for you up on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. If you'll take down the motion so we can see the participants on Zoom off the screen, and then let me open this to discussion by the body. Let me start here at the dais. Any comments on this from either of my two colleagues?
Sure.
All right. Seeing none, I'll switch up to the Zoom. And who is raising their hand?
Me.
Okay, Madam Mayor, please go ahead.
I am really excited to get this contract done. And I'll just tell you what a difference a day makes. When I look back a decade ago from where we were and where we are now, it is just night and day, and I'm super grateful. And I'm super grateful for their service, but the collaboration that we have. I think our relationship with our fire department has never been better. So I am very, very proud. I, the reason I wanted to speak on this is I just got word that the Reno Airport also has approved the contract. So it's nice to see that we will finally have services at the airport that are much needed. And I want to just say thank you so much to 731 for helping make that a reality because this community will be much safer and better for it. So thanks, everyone. I appreciate you. I don't know who's there, if there's anyone there from 731, but just... I don't know who's there, if there's anyone there from 731, but just please let them know, Vice Mayor, thanks.
Well, there are, and I was going to invite them up to speak if they're interested, once we had the presentation and the council comments. So let me turn to Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. For my part, I echo many of the sentiments of Madam Mayor. I think we each day are very grateful and thankful for the men and women of 731, for their exemplary work efforts, and for their leadership very broadly in this community. I know that you started this meeting by being very thankful and grateful for all of the firefighting efforts that happened in the Davis Creek Fire, and certainly I echo those sentiments as well. But for me, it's the men and women of the Reno Fire Department who put on the gear every day and show up and answer the calls for service that are incredibly high. It is about the work that they do every day, and I am just very grateful for the effort that they put in. I'm grateful for how they operate and conduct themselves as representatives for our city. And I will say, I'm grateful to our council and my council colleagues for the work that we have done to support our firefighters with both the apparatus replacement program, with making sure that we have added firefighters when we have been able to, and also for the decision that we made to build a central fire station. So all of these things are just my opportunity to be grateful to 731, and to thank my colleagues, really. And so I'm happy to support this item. Madam Mayor already remarked, but I'll also remark that the consistent work of Jesse and Mr. Pruitt and Ms. Santoyo has allowed us to get to a good space, which has not always been possible, and so I thank them as well.
All right, very good. And then let me turn Ms. Eberts here with us at the podium now. Any comments on this?
Yeah, I just, you know, want to thank the firefighters in Reno for what they do. They're incredible, and I know that we have some of the busiest fire stations in the country. And I just really, really am grateful that we have such wonderful people in our firefighters. So thank you.
All right. And I wanted to add my thanks as well. One of the things I'm particularly impressed with is, first of all, I got to see today's video that highlighted all the accomplishments in FY 2024, and the team did a tremendous job. But one of the statistics that stood out to me was, we had Chief Cochran, and he mentioned that we had 50,000 calls that we responded to, and I think there were 500,000 calls into dispatch in total. But 50,000 calls we responded to, and apparently a city record, according to what I listened to today, and I wanted to commend you for that. The second thing is that our 731, the mayor already mentioned part of this, which had to do with the airport, but they have actually preceded us in an effort that we're working on, which is to, once again, look at regionalizing fire. And as part of that, we'll need to go to the legislature and get a bill, so that they can have actually a standalone agency similar to Flood, or RTC, or even Tomah. And that will require some doing, but they're anticipating that move, and they have managed to incorporate not only the airport, but also the City of Sparks firefighters in 731, which is definitely a first. And prior, when we were consolidated with the county, Sparks was not part of that. But I think taking that step and making sure that Sparks firefighters are advocated for and participate in a labor group such as yours is very seminal and is an important first step, or an important key step to consolidation or expanding our continuity of firefighting throughout our region. So I just wanted to remark on that, and of course, the firefighters know, I did my bit for the Davis Fire, trying to get as much information out on social media as I could, but they did a tremendous job. And I just became aware, I had talked with our staff about, is there a way people can thank our firefighters? And they have just, in the last day or so, set up a phone number. We're going to publish that, so that people that want to send their thanks to the firefighters can do so as well, not just hearing from our city council, but others in the community as well. So with that, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just want to respond to something I heard you say. I didn't really know it was going to come up, because, you know, this is about labor and costing.
Right.
But obviously, labor is a big component of services. And you mentioned an effort to regionalize fire, and coincidentally, I received a request from our scheduling office to meet with a lobbyist that we've hired to work on this law that you're talking about. And obvious, obviously, I have been excluded, you know, of the retaliatory scheme of all the briefings that you all are having, but I have received some, you know, sentences from staff that there is an effort of revitalization, regionalization. And I just, I know I have been attending meetings, and I just haven't seen anything that the council is actually having a transparent, open discussion about this. So are there two discussions going on? One, in, you know, conversations people are having, contracts about regionalizing, and then the public, open, transparent discussion about this strategy of the City of Reno is just not going before a public forum?
So.
And you don't have to answer that? You don't have to answer that? I'm, I am positing off of what you said, that that is my observation.
Okay. Well, I am going to answer, to date, I've only heard the same few sentences that you've heard, but that doesn't mean that I haven't heard it out in the community, which I have. But my main point was the fact that our 731 has expanded their reach to include other firefighters, and I think that's a good step towards regionalization. And secondly, I do think it'd be good, ultimately, this year sometime, to have a very in-depth conversation about the possibility of regionalizing fire. Madam Manager, please.
Thank you. It should be on your schedules by now, for in January, there will be a regional meeting to discuss fire regionalization.
Yeah, I won't be here in January, but I want to say, one is, you know, at the end of the day, the decision is one of the city council that has the responsibility for the largest fire department and fire response in the region. And then, two, the decision to go to a, you know, to ask the legislature for those authorities. So I think before we get much further down, the Reno City Council should have a home jurisdiction discussion on this, particularly with so many moving parts, being told by staff that we've hired a lobbyist to work on strategies for regionalization. Let's, let's do our work in public.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Ms. Breckus. Let me ask, are there any more comments on the contract before us? Let me ask, would any member of our firefighting team like to address anything at this time?
I do want to weigh in on that. I, I too have not had any conversation other than, you know, the, what you had discussed out in the public, other than I've not had any conversations with lobbyists or even with staff. I think that they were waiting to have it in a public forum, which I do think is important. So I just want to clarify that for the record, and maybe they're trying to get organized, you know, I don't know, because staff has to do all that work. They have to prepare and plan, so that we can be ready. But I do want to clarify, I have not had any of those converses whatsoever. But again, out in the community, yes, of course, because people want the best fire service possible, and they deserve it. So thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. There's nothing going on.
No.
Anywhere.
I've had the exact same experience, so thank you, Madam Mayor. And let me turn to our 731 representatives. Would any of you like to say anything, or at this time, before we vote, take a motion?
Good morning. Dan Tapia, President Reno Sparks Airport Firefighters. Yeah, I just want to say, to echo the, the mayor, this relationship is, is as good as it's ever been. She's correct, 10 years ago, this was a very hostile environment, at least for, you know, us, the 731 and, and fire in general. But we, we very much so appreciate the, the relationships that have been built here. We cherish all of them. We, we count on you guys deeply, right, to get, to help us get to where we need to be. So thank you for, for considering this, this contract. It means a lot to our firefighters. We thank all of you. We are very thankful for all the reaching out that everybody has done for, to us. I mean, this is just what we do, right? This is, we don't necessarily love that part of it, but I mean, we appreciate it for sure. We're just happy to help and glad that specifically that, this fire ended the way it did. So thank you.
All right. Good to see you, Dan. Appreciate you being here, and several of your members being here. With that, I am looking for a motion, and if you would like to put the motion back up, that's the proposed motion back up on the screen, that would be helpful. All right. Would someone like to make a motion here today?
Everybody, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Mayor Sheeby to move the tentative agreement between the City of Reno and the International Association of Firefighters Local 731. And I have a second from Councilmember Martinez. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for what you do every day. Glad we're able to move your new contract forward.
Madam Vice Mayor, before we open item D1, can we reflect back to item A3 and give Ms. Robin Palmer the opportunity to give public comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Palmer, you're up on the screen with raised hand, if you want to speak. Clerk may have more instructions for you.
Will you try it one more time? Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, we will keep in communication with Ms. Palmer and see if there's something else we can do.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we're going to move on to item D1, which is a finance item. It's a presentation, discussion, and adoption of Reno's formal plan for compliance with Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964.
Madam Clerk, this is Councilmember Reese, and we're not hearing the audio.
Okay.
Thank you, we just turned his mic back on.
Okay, we just.
Thank you so much.
Can you start again?
Yeah, absolutely.
And Madam Clerk, hold on, I'm so sorry. I have been getting kicked on and off intermittently, so I don't know if that's a me issue or a you issue, but I'm just flagging it for you.
Thank you, we'll work with IT on getting that figured out.
Okay, I think you're good to go.
Okay. Everybody can hear me now. All right. Mark Stone, Title 6 Coordinator, Grants Administrator for the City of Reno and Finance Department, for the record. I'm here today to talk to you about the City of Reno Titles, Title 6 Plan. The alignment with the strategic plan for the city, fiscal sustainability, economic and community development. So what is Title 6? Title 6, no person in the United States shall, on the ground of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. This comes directly from the Title 6 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. So why are we focusing on this right now? The issuance of Executive Order 14,091, or Further Advancing Racial Equity in Support of Underserved, or For Underserved Communities Through the Federal Government, required federal agencies to issue an equity action plan annually. Certain agencies' equity action plans require implementation of equity and programmatic enforcement of civil rights in every program and policy. All federal funds, including grants, contracts, and pass-through dollars, are at risk if we do not pass Title 6 compliance plan. In FY 23, that funding was $35 million. I've just completed last year's lookback, and it's $27 million, something we anticipate to continue near in the future. Also, there's potential referral to the Department of Justice for appropriate legal action, if we are not compliant. So what does Title 6 compliance plan look like? In short, public participation, limited English proficiency, environmental justice, dissemination of information, training, data collection, and a complaint process. So I have a recommended motion ahead of you, and if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I guess I do have one question. I mean, could you put up that previous slide?
Sure.
So how, how do we, did you do a public participation process out of finance, or what?
No. So what we're saying is, is public participation is that we actually have to be actively engaged with the, with the communities in which we are serving in specific programs that are receiving federal financial dollars. So if we're going to do a project, build a building, do a roadway project, we have to engage with those communities that are affected by that project to get their opinion and their thoughts on the process.
So when our staff go out, and they're going to, like, rebuild a road like they did over, near Virginia Lake last year, they, the fact that they engaged with the public that were being affected by that disruption, it was a two-year, you know, I said last year, but it was actually a two-year process. The fact that they, did they have to do it in a certain way, or is it just the one-on-ones that they did?
There isn't one specific way that it has to be done. But what, what the feds want to see is that we are engaging with the affected communities, that we understand who they are, so the demographics of the area that's being affected, that we are showing, that we are meeting them where they're at, in terms of their demographic makeup. For example, heavily Hispanic community, you're not going to send me out to speak to them, you're going to send somebody out who is familiar with their background, their culture, have those conversations with them. And then we have to show that we are meaningfully listening to them, that we are giving them the opportunity to speak, and that we're taking their opinion into consultation.
Okay. And then on the environmental justice piece, I mean, how do we show that? Do we, yeah, how do we demonstrate?
So the environmental justice is that we, we cannot enact any program that negatively impacts one community, especially a disproportionate community, more than any other community. So we can't do something that causes any kind of environmental impact on a community that is typically underserved, but it, it means overall as well. And part of that, the city, a few years ago, had come into compliance with the Justice 40 Initiative, and the Justice 40 Initiative falls right into the environmental justice portion of this.
Okay, so do we have to sign paperwork certifying that we have met these tenants of environmental justice, or is just doing Justice 40, for example, enough?
It's, yeah, so it's, it's taking into account, doing the research to ensure there is no certification process, as you will. There's just a, we have to show that we've gone through the process of researching what the environmental impacts are.
All right. And so you're here today because we have met all of these things, and then your motion that you're looking for today would be to what?
To adopt the plan.
The actual plan?
Right. So, yeah, so we are, we are doing these things. You guys saw back in August, the, the Language Access Plan, which addresses our limited English proficiency in the city. We already do dissemination of information. The training, training process is about to be implemented with the adoption of the plan. So yes, we are doing a lot of these things. This is to codify and enshrine.
Okay.
Our actions towards nondiscrimination.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Stone, that was very informative. Other questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So what is this process you mentioned, making sure that certain areas are not disproportionately affected by, what was it again?
The environmental justice?
Yeah, yeah.
So doing the research on certain projects. So we already go through a process of research when we're doing things like building roadway projects, tying into the sewer. It's just to ensure that, one, a disproportionate group or community doesn't have to bear the environmental impact of what we're doing. So if we're going to do something, like build a roadway project, that's going to cause water runoff, for example, that that is not going to affect one community more than any other one.
Okay. Now, is that just for City of Reno, or is that something that we need to look at for when developments are coming in, like something that we're approving?
So in terms of Title 6, Title 6 is just to the application of any project that's funded by federal assistance dollars. So anything that we get a grant or a contract from the feds for, that we have to ensure that we're following that. As a city, I believe we, I don't want to speak for somebody else, but I believe we are already taking these factors into account. But in terms of developments that are being built, we're not building those with, with federal funding.
Okay, so this is just for the federal funding piece?
So we don't have to go through that process, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else at the dais here? Mr. Martinez?
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I had a couple of questions on the slide that you have up right now. I'm just wondering how the Language Access Plan that the city has been working on is incorporated. I'm assuming it's with the limited English proficiency, but if you can just touch on that point.
Yeah, so as part of the limited English proficiency for Title 6, we are going to follow what the Language Access Plan has. And the feds are very aware of the, I think it's AB 266, which and the feds are very aware of the, I think it's AB 266, which required the Language Access Plan for limited English proficiency. Those requirements follow with what the feds want us to do, so the Language Access Plan actually drives the limited English proficiency portion of this plan.
And I read in the report too, that the report, along with any vital information, can be available, translated in other languages, and how do folks go about receiving those documents? Or, and is this presentation also available in other languages by request?
By request, yeah. As requested, we will, we will put through, we will go through the effort of having it translated into any appropriate language that's requested.
How do folks request that?
So there's different ways. I believe it can be done through noemi at the city manager's office. The plan has specific ways, but we will be putting, once it's adopted, on the website a Title VI webpage that gives people the opportunity to also make different requests and file complaints with the city.
Okay, yeah, thanks for addressing that, because I didn't hear anything about the complaint process, but it sounds like that's also going to be available on this website.
Correct. As a requirement for the feds, we have to have on the website a, available in both English and Spanish, because Spanish is identified as the number-one limited English proficiency language in the city, a form, a complaint form for somebody to download, fill out, and submit to the Title VI Coordinator for the city. And so those will all be published on the website with the place to remit them, both in person, through mail, or through email.
Okay, and then when you talk about training, that's for staff to be in compliance?
Yes, so while there's Title VI liaisons for each department that will be required to go through training, this will most likely be annually. It can be done every two years, so we'll look at how that looks. Training, yes, there will be on Moodle, which is the city's training platform, a training for every city employee upon their start date to complete within 30 days, and every existing employee will get that training to complete within 30 days after this.
And the data collection, would that just be depending on what grant is, what's required by the grants that we receive? Is there sort of a template that will follow for that process?
There's a general, a general requirement for data collection, which is demographic data, both in the communities and for contractors that we're working with, and then people affected by certain events. The best example I can give is that, like roadway right-of-way projects, where they're buying a parcel of houses, that we have to know the individual demographic of each owner of those homes, so those are part of the data collection.
Okay, that's...
We could have a second round if you have more? Okay, and then I saw we had Mrs. Barza maybe wanted to address one of your questions.
Good morning. Cynthia Barza, Chief Equity and Community Relations Officer, for the record. I do want to just reiterate that we will work closely with Mark and his team and the department liaisons to implement whatever steps will come from this. Ultimately, if there is a request for something to be translated in a different language, the liaison would help facilitate that as well. So we are a resource, we're involved in the process, and will provide support as needed.
All right, thank you.
Perfect.
Let me go on to the Zoom, and if you could show the pictures up there, see if there are any comments from folks on Zoom. I see Ms. Breckus has her hand raised.
Yeah, I mean, I think this topic is a good one from the discussion we had last time. You know, we know the fire department historically has received federal grants or regularly gets pass-throughs from the state of grants, and so having conversations with the impacted people and everyone in the communities impacted by fire services. So, you know, the fact that, you know, we have understanding that, you know, maybe the labor groups that are private are organizing to advance, you know, regionalization, or some of us are hearing private conversations. I have a lot of discussions with my constituents, and I haven't heard, had any constituents give, related, meet private conversations about the desire for fire regionalization. But I do know, and this maybe is more directed at staff, that I did get a request this week to meet with our lobbyist that we've hired to advance regionalization. So staff, you know, think hard about this, and then the work that went into this about engaging with the public, and why we're, you know, moving forward with a concept that hasn't been vetted in a public forum. I think that's, this is an example of what the spirit of this law is. And you can't have two tracks for major policy discussions. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Breckus. Either Madam Mayor or Mr. Reese?
Right. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I didn't get this gentleman's name. What's his name?
Yep, Mark Stone.
Mark, I don't remember having you come before us, but I think you are very knowledgeable. I think you've done a great job. Unfortunately, we don't get to meet everyone that works at the city, but I think you did a great job. I know sometimes getting up here, is this your first time or no?
Yeah, this is my first time up here.
Good job. Good job. You should be proud, because I know it can be really, really nerve-wracking. But I think you did a great job, and like I said, unfortunately, we don't get to meet everyone, you know, that works for us, which is, you know, hard to do because we're such a big team. But I want to acknowledge you seem incredibly knowledgeable, and I think you did a great job. And the last comments made by council member, I'm not so sure those have anything to do with what we're talking about right now. So I just want to mention that, so that we can stay on point. Thanks so much. Good job.
Okay. Councilmember Reese? Anything? All right, see nothing. Mr. Mar...
I'm kicked off, because I've been kicked off a few times, so.
Nothing, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martinez, did you have anything more to add?
Just one final question. With data collection and dissemination, is that something that will come back to this body as a presentation, or is it just going to the federal government when they require those documents to be presented?
Yeah, so data collection happens, is going to happen for the projects of, that are affected by Title VI. We are not required to disseminate them or provide them unless there is a Title VI complaint that is found to be, I guess, within jurisdiction for the City of Reno. And that, and those complaint process that is handled, the investigation's handled by the federal entity overseeing the dollars that we've received for that project, and we would provide them with that data.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I just wanted to see if there was going to be any follow-up on this plan, but I appreciate the insight. Thank you.
Anyone else here at the dais? Ms. Taylor? Nothing? Ms. Ebert? Nothing? All right, well, I just, I found this very informative. I don't recall similar presentation. We may have previously put on consent or just approved it. Is this a first?
This is the first time we've brought it in front of council, yep.
Right, okay. But we have done them before, or is this the first plan?
So this is the first plan for the city that's been adopted in this form. I believe there was, 2018, found by the city attorney's office, there was an internal policy for Title VI compliance. It was a much shorter document, basically just saying we were going to be compliant with it, with the new federal mandates and the different federal agencies requiring us to have a compliance plan. This is the first time we've brought a fully flush-through plan.
Yeah, it was very interesting, and I really appreciate your time too, and you're obviously very skilled before you got here to do this kind of work, so appreciate it. All right, well, seeing any further, no further comment, we're going to move into a motion, and I am looking for a motion to adopt this plan.
I move to approve the City of Reno Title VI Compliance Plan.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Martinez, second from Councilmember Taylor. Any comments on the motion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you so much. Our next item up is item F1.
So Madam Vice Mayor, one more attempt. I have Ms. Palmer actually on my phone, so we're going to see if we can give her the opportunity to speak this way instead.
Okay. Ms. Palmer, if you want to go ahead and identify yourself and give us your thoughts.
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, state your name for the record if you need to speak.
Good morning, Vice Mayor Dewar, Mayor Sheeby, councilmembers in attendance there at the meeting and on Zoom, and attendees, but I see a lot of empty chairs there. It took a pretty tortuous route to get here this morning, but I'm glad to finally be here. I'm Robin Palmer. I'm a climate advocate. I'm commenting on Agenda Item B12, kind of after the fact, we've already voted on it. We are in a global climate crisis. Real people throughout the world are experiencing the impact of climate-related disasters and sacrificing their lives and property. Unprecedented storms, devastating hurricanes, flooding, drought, unrelenting heat waves, wildflop fires. We experienced our own climate-related emergency last week with the Davis Creek Fire, and I'd like to echo the thank you to the firefighters. I don't need to remind you that Reno is the fastest-warming city in the United States. Heat-related deaths are increasing, and it may seem in the distant future, but you, me, any, anyone in this room could die of a preventable heat-related death. The culprit: greenhouse gas emissions. I encourage the city to remember that transportation is the biggest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions when considering, well, you've already considered, item B12, which allocates funds for the expansion of the city's vehicular fleet. Please, whenever possible, I hope the city will purchase electric vehicles. And I'd appreciate it if someone could contact me about my issues with getting into a meeting to give public comment. I tried to give public comment last meeting and was not able to connect, so what am I to do?
Ms. Palmer, thank you so much for being here, and you have identified an issue that is challenging sometimes. I experienced it just yesterday where people get video, but they're not being heard, and they're regular people that often are heard, councilmembers themselves. They were heard yesterday, and it's not working today. So I'm not sure what today's issue was, and I don't mean just in this room, I mean in all the rooms that I participate in Zoom, the same problem persists occasionally. Maybe 5% of the time, there's a challenge. So we'll check into that, and we appreciate your comments on making sure that we have, you know, the appropriate fleet, including electric vehicles as necessary. All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that, and maybe someone can follow up with her. That'd be great. All right, we, is there anything else before we move on to item F1? All right, well, we're moving on to F1, which is the ordinance adoption for the Canyons PUD Amendment, and I believe our attorneys have something to say of this.
Yes, this is the ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6685, LDC 24-00050, the Canyons PUD Amendment. Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled "Zoning to Change the Text and Plan Unit Development PUD Handbook" to A) increase the number of residential units from 81 to 126, B) reduce the number of land use categories and villages, C) modify the allowed uses within each land category, D) make changes to various environmental standards, including grading, feral horse management, and open space requirements, and E) make changes to other development standards, including site, building, roadway design, among other modifications, together with other matters properly relating there to Ward III.
All right, and I think it's actually in Ward II? Just a comment, side comment. I know it is. And then let me ask Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, we don't have anyone registered for public comment. For the record, we did receive three letters of correspondence that have been distributed to the Reno City Council as three letters of opposition.
Does it need to be changed if it's in the wrong ward? I don't think so, but what do you think? I guess that's administrative. It is where it is, whether we...
It is where it is. Yeah, I think we're all right.
All right, very good. All right. Is there any council comment on this project, this proposed ordinance adoption? Okay, Ms. Breckus?
Yeah, and I want to apologize. I missed this portion of the meeting, our first, which meeting? Our last August meeting. I do have a few questions for staff. First question, I think it's Mr. Williams. I can't, I can't, I only see the rear, but I think that's the staff planner. Was the PUD Canyons, the original one, certified?
The original was certified. Carter Williams, Associate Planner, for the record, but yes, it was certified.
Okay, because there seems to be a problem with our city website. I checked today because I wanted to read the amendments with the adoption in face-to-face differential, and I did not see that one loaded up on the city website. So once they get certified, they get put up on the city website, and I just, I didn't know the explanation on that. Then, in addition, your staff report both times, for the 28th and then today, does it include a copy of the, of the PUD?
It does. It's located within the ordinance document.
It follows the ordinance?
Yes.
Is it a, oh, you know what, I, I hope I can be heard. There's some noise. Okay, there's some noise outside my...
No one else is speaking, and there's no noise on our end.
Okay, that's good. Mr. Williams, is the, what is behind the ordinance, is that just amendments or redlines? Or is it the full ordinance as a, as a full copy?
It's the full copy, including the redlined amendments that were made in the motion in the past hearing.
Okay, now, the, and I will disclose that I did review the entire record, including the video. Did, it was, it's going from 81 units to how many?
126 units.
Okay, now, when it was annexed, it came in, I thought 80 was a magic number, because it was 80 lots, so it corresponded essentially to one per acre, and that was, had reliance upon the prior master plan. Before it came to PUD, what was the master plan designation?
The master plan designation was, well, it was single-family, which allows a range of densities, obviously, but the zoning was single-family 15.
Okay, 15.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so this increase up to, it's about a 40% increase, I think? So it gets up to the higher level of the density of which it was annexed in, say, 80 acres. I see that. Now, one concern that I've been hearing in the testimony and in this area is horse and human contact, particularly wild horses and cars. And I didn't see in the record what the, what is the roadway length increase to accommodate this 40% increase of homes up on this hillside? What, do you happen to know the road length increase?
It's in the fiscal impact analysis. I would maybe defer that question to the applicant's representative for an accurate number, but it wasn't included in the fiscal impact analysis.
Why don't we have the applicant's...
That's a funny spot for it, but I guess I could see that. It looked like it increased...
Ms. Breckus?
Yes?
Why don't we have the applicant representative answer, and then let's move on, questioning, because you reached your time, we'll come back. So if you want to...
Yeah, yeah. Well, let me, let me continue with him.
Well, what I'm saying is you're out of time, and I'd like to go around the other questions and come back.
Sure, sure.
So do you want to hear the answer now, or?
Yeah, I'll have the applicant. I prefer often for staff to provide the technical information, but what is the roadway length increase?
Good morning. My name's Brooke Oswald, representing this project. I don't have an exact number on that. As was mentioned, it is in the fiscal impact. Just making a guess of that, I would say we've roughly, and it's really challenging, because we took two roadways, there's probably another, a third more roadway, to a half is what I would gather. Now, a lot of that is really neck-down, where it doesn't have parking, and it necks down. They're also on very steep hillsides, so their access is going to be limited for horses and some of those other, if that's the concern.
Okay, thank you. I will yield the floor as the chair requests and wait for the next...
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, please. Mr. Reese?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to acknowledge, maybe perhaps what's not patently obvious, which is that the last time this project was in front of us, a great Navadan was with us, that was Tom Dolan. And since this project passed the initial introduction stage, Mr. Dolan has passed away. And so I just didn't want to go without saying my sincere condolences to his family. He was a tremendous Navadan, a friend to all he met, gave to so many charities, and he was a life, truly... and he was a life truly and fully lived. And I just pray grace and peace to his family.
All right. Thank you so much. I did a post myself on Facebook. I had opportunity to work with him on a number of other projects, you know, which were a lot easier than this last project in terms of getting to yes. But thank you so much for that acknowledgement. And I believe he has services coming up next week. I don't know the details. All right.
To Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, they're on Tuesday of next week at Our Lady of, I think, St. Lima the Rose at Catholic, Bishop Minogue High School, St. Rose of Lima, Tuesday at 11:00 a.m.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Let me, is there anyone else on Zoom? Madam Mayor, did you have comments here today? Okay, we'll come back to you in a minute, Ms. Breckus, but we still got the podium here. Anything from Mr. Martinez, Ms. Taylor? Okay, Ms. Ebert?
Yeah, I do have a question. So that meeting got a little bit contentious, I guess you could say. Can you just clarify for me what, what was put in regarding the wild horses?
Yeah, so the document that was shared actually during the hearing and was attached as an attachment to this case, that was the specific changes that were made. There was a narrative component to the feral horse management overview section. And that was contributed both by Councilmember, Vice Mayor Doerr, excuse me, and the Wild Horse Connection.
Okay, so what, what was the final thing? Can you, do you mind sharing that?
The actual language?
Yeah.
Excuse me, let me. So the change, do you want me to read the entire section? Or I can just, the specific changes?
Just as it applies to the horses, yeah. What is in place with the ordinance?
So the narrative was, was changed to clarify that management efforts are related to fencing, not relocation, as well as fertility control. And changes were made, again, so mostly it was about fencing. It wasn't, it was trying to deviate from the language of relocation of horses within the range. It clarified where horses may be moving on the range, and it removed specific elements of the plant, or the narrative, where it talked about the Bureau of Land Management, active efforts that had already been passed. So it was, it was just cleaning some of that language up. And then lastly, there was a, it added reseeding efforts to the east of the project area were made to improve our conditions through erosion control and improved vegetation and to benefit wildlife. That was added as well.
So specific to the horses, it was basically just fencing?
Yes, and it wasn't changing any regulations, those amendments. It really was clarifying language so that there wasn't any different, differentiating policies that conflicted with current city policy.
So just to keep the horses fenced out of the project site, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I had a comment. Yes, it was a very challenging meeting, one of my most challenging, that specific item. I did have a chance to talk to Brooke Oswald, the advocate for the project, yesterday, and we did clarify a few things. He told me since the project was approved, they've had conversations. It sounds like the Wild Horse Connection had a conversation immediately with Mr. Dolan. And to Mr. Reese's point, Mr. Dolan said, and I'm third party here, let me know what I can do to help. We need to take care of the wild horses. And I see a member of the audience who's with Wild Horse Connection, who's nodding. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that he understood what a sensitive issue this is, and he made a commitment to them, an oral commitment, I understand, to work with the group to help facilitate Wild Horse Management. And I don't know if you missed public comment, Deana, but, you know, if you want to speak to that after we finish here, you may. But I also wanted to say that, and speaking to Brooke, he also mentioned that he misunderstood during the conversation about the, the horse guards and the gates and where they were to be located on the inner outside. And I guess they've worked that out, they considering that a minor change that didn't need to be memorialized, but I don't know if that's correct, that it's a minor, from your perspective, and I don't know if Brooke would want to speak to that. And then to me personally, Brooke said that he had pledged to do everything he could to help us facilitate this, that he was as surprised as anyone that the Nevada Department of Agriculture sent a letter on the morning of, well, actually, the evening before our hearing at 8:00 p.m., which I did not see until roughly 9:00 a.m. and did not have time to read or respond, which is why I was asking for a continuance at that time. So he has made some commitments, and I just wanted to see Brooke if you wanted to speak to those things.
Once again, Brooke Oswald, for the record. Personally, I'll speak for myself. I've worked with this issue for over seven years, originally started with Councilmember Doerr removing some cattle guards up in Palisades. It's something I'm very passionate about. I grew up around horses, been around horses all my life. It is working with the NDA, and I think that's where I can help to facilitate is that relationship and that relationship between advocates, property, private property owners in the NDA and the city. And I'm happy to do that and help facilitate those conversations.
Speaking about the project?
Yeah, this project or as a whole, as we move through other projects or anything. Secondly, speaking for Ms. Dolan, I was not privy to that conversation, so I'm not exactly sure what happened in that. I can speak that the Dolans have, as anyone up there, have done so much to help as far as some seeding efforts, providing user agreements to allow for diversionary feeding, fertility control, continuing those for ongoing years. We'll be doing that again next year, the Dolans will.
You can keep going.
And then what would the?
Well, I just said that you, you had mentioned to me that you had misunderstood about the gates or the fencing, and that you wanted to make a correction, but you thought it could be an administrative correction?
Yeah, and I guess Tracy grabbed me after. I guess it's just a way the fences are positioned within that. It was, she said the way it's written in Valley View isn't correct, and that's maybe something that I believed, we were okay with changing that. We want to make sure that we do what is the right thing for the advocates.
Right. And then you're going to be presuming that this passes. You would be coming back with a tenant map at some point?
At some point, yes. We'll be moving through the tentative map process.
All right, and I think you told me on the phone that you had hoped to address a number of the issues that I brought up in the tenant map versus in the PUD. And I appreciate that because they do need to be addressed, whether they are addressed in the PUD or the tenant map. These are still outstanding issues, so I appreciate that acknowledgement.
Certainly. I think we're just looking at the appropriate time to implement those, those sort of issues.
All right, well, that's it for me. The round two, back to you, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, we're looking at 30% more roadway with 40% more homes. And one of the reasons I didn't support this originally, and it's topical because we've been talking about firefighting today, is, you know, just more people up in that fire-risk area when it's coming in those canyons. And our firefighters, and this should be fresh on everyone's mind, is when they have to go out and clear houses, evacuate, they put door hangers with little ribbons on the door. This is 40% more homes that if there's a fire up in that area, and there have been fires, they have to go and check in on folks. That's 40% more people who have to get their go-bags and so on. And that's part of why I found this a very irresponsible decision by the council and inconsistent with our policies and the work we did looking at our housing supply. We knew that we had an abundance of these sort of homes, these high-end homes that probably will cost, you know, just grading alone, what a median income can afford in a whole household before you start building the site. So it was never housing that was going to fit our needs. And, and so for those two reasons, one, more roadway, more potential for car and horse carnage that we've seen, I don't think we've found the spot solution of fencing to be meaningful, it's very stopgap. Two, the risk of fire to not only our, our folks and the households. And then three, and I do remember this one too, more roadway means more road maintenance. So when we're not getting roads that are deteriorating fixed in our neighborhoods or plowed, it's because we're making commitments for these sort of roads. And at minimum, I offered when we did the canyons that these should be private roads, so an HOA could maintain them, because these are much more aggressive roads than ones that have a lot more density on it and not as much, quote, open space. So those were some of my earlier objections, but I also want to notify, I don't, I don't find it compelling that, oh, the applicant, who I guess is deceased, or his heirs, or, you know, the consultant, will be a party at the time of construction, follow things through. We've seen time and time again that the land gets entitled, and then that entitlement gets sold to someone like, you know, say Toll Brothers, who owns the land adjacent, or in other parts of the valley. We've seen Toll Brothers or major home builders. And really, at that point, and we shouldn't be telling the public otherwise, you know, the contractual relationship is that they're in charge. These other people have no role under the contracts of the land sales. So I think it's very unfair to represent that certain people will be involved in the project going on. We've actually seen quite the contrary. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting this. And I would also like to ask staff to please make sure you have the certifications up on the website of the PUDs.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Breckus. Madam Mayor, any comments? All right, Mr. Reese, any comments?
Yes?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Martinez? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, yes?
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it. You know, I think you can always look, and this is very common, that we see projects, any project, becomes controversial in any way. It just is sort of how it works whenever we're looking at, you know, building more homes. Fire can happen anywhere. It doesn't matter where it is. We've seen that with Collin Ranch, existing properties in downtown Reno. It just, it doesn't matter. So certainly, it's always a concern, but it doesn't matter where the project is. I also think we can look at projects very negatively, and that seems to be very popular whenever we do that. I want to say, I think it also matters how much work that you have to put into a project before it even gets here. And I do think the project is so much better because of Naomi and Tracy and Tom and the willingness to continue to look at it objectively, but also, you know, it is important to protect the horses. And I want to just say thank you to Brooklyn for recognizing that because I know everyone has put in a lot of work. So it's very easy to look at something very negatively, like I said, because it's very popular. It doesn't matter whether it's affordable housing or any type of housing, larger housing, it doesn't matter. It's economics 101. The less you have, the more supply and demand. That's just a fact, if you look at the economics of housing. So I want to point that out because I do think these projects are so much better. And we've seen where the council, and quite honestly, in Southern Nevada, where projects are, you know, more and more cities are getting slapped with these massive, massive lawsuits. So you have to look at them in a way where the findings are applicable. So I do want to recognize the hard work, again, of Naomi and Tracy and Tom. And, you know, I want to recognize Tom was always at the table on this project, cared greatly, cared greatly about the outcomes, about the community in which he lived in. And, you know, that's not always the case with every development that we work with. So I want to commend them on honestly doing the right thing and wanting to always make any project that they came forward with better. So I just, I just want to say that because I think there's a lot of good work that isn't recognized. And I know Naomi spent a lot of time on this. Tracy has spent a lot of time on this, not just with this project, but with many other projects. So I do think it's, it's in a place where it is so much better than where we started. And I know that that was important for everyone. So thank you. I do want to recognize that because I think that that gets lost. There are a lot of projects that could, that, you know, might not be to where I think the council is comfortable, but at the end of the day, when you have people working on them for countless hours to make a project better. So thank you.
All right, thanks, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Reese, you passed. And let me just ask, Mr. Martinez, did you, I've kind of lost track. No, more comments? And Ms. Taylor and Ms. Ebert?
Yeah. I do have a comment. Councilmember Doerr mentioned that there was an agreement made with Mr. Dolan right after the meeting and that it, you know, was verbal and not in writing. And I just want to stress, like, how important it is that these things are in writing because Mr. Dolan has now passed. How do we know, you know, that his will will go forward in this project? You know, I think that it's wonderful. It sounds like he had his heart in the right place, but do we have any guarantee that that will go forward with this project? And that's why it's so important to have these things included and have it in place and in writing. And to Councilmember Breckus's point, that if somebody else comes in, you have, you know, these entitlements, and then they can change, change what they're doing. So I just want to stress that that is so important. You know, it's wonderful when these things work out, and you can just do things with a verbal agreement, but that's not always the case. And we need to be, you know, aware of that and be honest about that. So, yeah, it's just a concern that I have, and, and this is a great, great way to point it out that, you know, not everybody's going to be here when this project is done. So we've got to be smart with it and be mindful when we plan it. So thank you.
Well, very well said. And since, my turn here, I'll just say, obviously, this is a very difficult project for me, going back to all the iterations of the project. I wanted to make sure that previous commitments that were made by other Dolan family members were continued. They're still co-owners of the property, and there was some hesitation to understand what those agreements were, but they're binding agreements. We need to be careful if we're going to deviate from those agreements that are in place on this property. It's not some other property. It's this property. And to that end, and you've made a very good point, Ms. Ebert, I'd like to just ask, since we're talking so much about horses, Deana Kirk, would you mind just coming up and just, you might as well memorialize it on, on the record here? You and Tracy spoke to Mr. Dolan, and could you just tell us what he said?
Correct. Deana Kirk, for the record, Wild Horse Connection. We did have a good conversation after the meeting, and it was about the way things should be, which is, we are in communication. All the communication should not be waiting until we get up here. It slows the project down. It creates for contentious meetings. So be in communication, back and forth throughout the entirety of the project, and then also have follow-through. And he was quite kind and really wanted to do whatever he could. He wanted to know what we needed, which is, sounds odd, but that's, we don't get that question very much. We, we need things all the time, and we're asking people, but they don't ask us, what do you need? And so whether it's making the road more accessible, moving the location of diversionary feeding, water, whatever it may be, it's, he said, we need to sit down and have these conversations, and we need, the project needs to be open to having these conversations and not wait until we're in these meetings to argue about it. And I think communication is key, follow-through is key, and that's what we talked about, so.
Okay. Thank you so much for sharing that. I was not part of the conversation myself, but I did hear about it afterwards, and it was confirmed from several different sources. So it's in that spirit that I asked Brooke, I said, before you begin the next phase, I would like to meet with whoever's going to carry this project forward, whether that is Mr. Dolan's sons, or, or Mr. Dolan's nephews, or even some other member of the, just to get started on a good footing for the tenant map, if this is approved here today. And I think it's critically important that our staff, who, you're here, Carter, but if it's not you, the larger staff, follow-through. You know, it was, a comment was made earlier about private roads. Well, that's something I've advocated since the beginning of this project. Why? Because the roads are high, subject to snow, maybe steep, maybe difficult to plow. We'll have rocks that need to be cleared. In talking to planning staff, they said that's absolutely something we're interested in, and will be brought up in the tenant map. So whatever the outcome, there's a number of issues that remain to be addressed, and we need to be incredibly thoughtful about those issues and very honest about where we're going with the project, to the previous speaker's perspective. So that's it for me. All right, so we've had our two rounds. Is there any final comment from council? Okay. I'm looking for a motion. This is up for ordinance adoption.
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
Second.
All right, Mr. Martinez, seconds. Any comments on the motion?
I have a comment.
Okay, Ms. Ebert?
I'm, I'm not going to support it just because I think that we should have more things kind of ironed out. I'm going to be consistent with my vote from last meeting, and it's not because I don't think that everybody's heart's in the right place, but I just think that we should have more things.
I just think that we should have more things, um, in writing for this project. So unfortunately I will not support.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, we have a motion on the table. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
All right. So, um, we have, uh, two, uh, votes of opposition from Ms. Breckus and Ms. Ebert, um, and the motion passes. So, um, we're counting on you team. We have a technical team here to do the right thing, make this as good a project as you possibly can, um, get the people, if they're not been participating, get them up to speed, um, with what's been committed to and the history of this project. And I, again, would like to sit down with them before you get too far down the field. All right. Well, with that, thank you, Mr. Carter, Mr. Williams, excuse me. And, um,
Vice Mayor Durore?
Yes.
I'd like to, this is Jackie Bryant, interim city manager. I'd like to state for the record that the certified PUD of the canyons is on the Reno.gov website under Development Services, adopted PUD and SPD handbooks. It has been there. Um, it is under the canyons alphabetical on page three.
Page three. Well, thank you for, thank you for that. I, I could not find it and I'm pretty fluid with that. So I appreciate that. Okay. Did you say page three or thirty? Three?
Thirty.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
It is, I, I looked. It is there.
Okay. Good.
It's been there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, the next item up, as we close out item F1, we're moving on to H1. And this is an opportunity for the city council to make any comments, including announcements regarding city boards and commissions, activities of charitable organizations and upcoming local community events. And, um, I will just go ahead and start. I wanted to say that at Western Regional Water Commission yesterday, um, we approved our staff to work with the regional planning staff to set up, um, information about PFOS. So PFOS is an emerging, um, constituent of concern in water, soil, air. And, um, I really felt it was an important, uh, to have a central place where people could find information about it, get data. So there's not confusing data saying, well, so-and-so said, or DEP said, or Tom Wa said, or Reno said, or some other third party said. Um, and so they're going to work together on making that part of Western Regional Water Commission's page, um, a drop-down with this data, which, which should point to other original data sources. This is kind of a first. The city led an effort a number of years ago, I'm going to say eight years ago, to formulate a centralized water quality database. And I think it was called TRIG, T-R-I-G. And, um, it has, um, not continued to be supported, but it is a very good concept to be able to have all kinds of water quality data found in one place. It really makes information sharing easier. So I was really pleased that Western Regional Water Commission did that yesterday. Um, I also wanted to make an announcement. This board adopted a resolution, uh, basically in opposition to the rate increase, uh, that MV Energy had proposed for electric and gas. And, um, it, the primary part of that in my mind was that we were supporting our residents in their opposition to the rate increase. I myself, um, made oral comments, provided written comments, attended hearings. And the great news is that the PUC, PUCN, Public Utilities Commission in Nevada, um, issued an order and they did not support the rate increase. So the rate increase was a hundred seventy-five percent increase in the base rate. They went with a twelve percent. So the difference is they approved $2 on our fixed monthly charge instead of almost $30 per month. That's huge. That's a $24 increase in a year versus a 360, if I have this right, um, increase in a year. $24 versus 360. They also did not support MV Energy's request to modify the net metering, uh, rules, which is very favorable for solar so that people that either have solar or want to install solar will be supported in that. Um, that was very remarkable. I think, um, I want to give kudos and thanks to this council for making a stand. And, uh, there was approximately 250 residents who either testified or wrote in comments and there to be commended because as I said on my Facebook, it takes a village and the village won. So, um, with that, I just wanted to share that with the council. Um, let me ask if anyone else has something to share. Uh, Ms. Ebert, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing. Any, my colleagues, Mr. Martinez, yes?
Yeah, I just had a couple of remarks. Uh, the first one is to echo some of the sentiments that were made at the beginning of the meeting and thank all of our regional efforts that combated the Davis Creek fire and making sure that I highlight and thank those members. I also wanted to acknowledge the consecration that happened at St. Peter Canisius this past Sunday where Mr. Dolan was highlighted for his efforts and, um, his contributions to making sure that that church, uh, became a reality. And so it was a beautiful ceremony. I believe Councilmember Taylor was there in attendance as well. And so just seeing the outpouring of love that he received, um, because of his efforts at that church was incredible. And the last thing is making sure to highlight that we are in Hispanic Heritage Month and that Fiesta on Wells is happening on Sunday. So if our of you are available to come through Fiesta on Wells and help celebrate, um, and live some of the culture of, uh, Hispanic community that is celebrating a lot of the Independence Days and for Latin American countries. Um, so I welcome anybody in the community to that event.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Taylor? Nothing for today. Um, how about on the Zoom, Ms. Breckus? Anything? Uh, Madam Mayor, something to share?
Yeah, just, I, I want to, I, I mentioned it earlier, but today, um, Airport Board, um, with Airport Fire merged with 731. I want to say thank you to our airport representatives. That is Kitty Jung, Joel Grace, Jennifer Cunningham, Richard J. Um, that, that vote was unanimous. There were some significant concerns over safety procedures. And, um, you know, this has been a long time, a lot of work put in. Want to say thank you to 731. Um, that is, it's going to make a huge difference on airport, uh, service and safety when it comes to fire procedures. So I'm very happy to see that. I've also asked, uh, Darren to come and give a presentation from the Airport Board since we haven't had one in a long time, but, um, he will probably elaborate on that with his presentation. But I wanted the council to know because it's been a long time coming and it's going to offer so much, um, some, you know, some great services that, um, have been needed, particularly on the fire safety side at the airport. So I'm, I just want to commend our board members over there. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just, a comment on that. Um, I myself got hurt on a plane that was arriving at Reno Tahoe. This is years ago, but it highlighted the issue of response in the airport. Um, I had, I was the first offloaded. Paramedics met me, but it, you know, as you know, Madam Mayor, a couple of years ago, we received strong letters of concern about the fire and emergency service and the fact that there was no 911 at the airport to call. Um, in other words, it didn't apply to the airport. Um, they use the regular phone system and it wasn't very effective. And I think they've made a huge number of changes. So thank you for recognizing all of that. Um, let me ask, Mr. Reese, did you have any, um, comments for the group?
No, but thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Um, and with that, um, we have no public hearings. Um, we're at our final public comment.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We have Lindsay Holland.
Good morning. I guess it's still morning. My name is Lindsay Holland. I don't know the pro, the process or procedure for all of this. I'm sorry.
Well, you're perfect. You're here, you're talking. It's all good.
So many people left. So, um, I'm here to, on behalf of the forgotten road at Virginia Lake. It's called East Shore Drive. And it's the other street opposite Lakeside. So we have Lake, Lakeside on one side and, um, East Shore Drive on the other. Um, so I have been a Reno resident for 44 years. And when I looked over in there, it was like I've been living here longer than most of those people who are alive. Um, I have, I'm living in a condo right on this, right on the street. And those condos are actually, um, uh, they were purchased and behind us are, um, 288 units of apartments. So what's happening on East Shore Drive right now is there are so many cars and so many speeders. And, um, the apartments that are behind us are a completely different entity. So remember when the old bungalows were there and they tore them down and they built all this stuff? And so the apartments are a different complete entity to us who are on the street. We're all condos and they were purchased. Um, there's 288 units behind us and one, and two ways. One out, coming in or out on Limbury, and the other one coming in and out on East Shore Drive. Um, I noticed that there had been some calming, traffic calming on Lakeside. And so that's what inspired me. I'm a, I'm a licensed drug and alcohol counselor. For the last 28 years, I just retired in January, and I walk my dog two or three times a day. And I've noticed this increase of not only cars, but I, an increase of people speeding horribly. It's awful. Um, I called Lakeview Apartments two days ago to find out why they have two addresses on their website. They have a Brinkby address, which was their original, Lakeview Apartments on Brinkby, but they have now changed their, um, they remodeled and their now new main entrance is on East Shore Drive, 2600 East Shore Drive, which comes right out onto our street. And they have 328 units at their complex. A total, this is total, 616 residential units and half, I'm, or a quarter of them, it doesn't really matter, all come out on East Shore Drive and they speed. It's like, it's like a freeway out there. It's so dangerous. Um, nobody goes the speed limit. It's supposed to be 15 miles an hour. Nobody goes the speed limit. Not the, I just saw a school bus this morning. The cops don't go the speed limit. None of the, the Amazon people, the delivery trucks, they don't go the speed limit either.
And Ms. Holland, you're out of time, but I'm going to give you another 30 seconds if you could, um, wrap up. Thank you.
Um, there's adults, children, pets, runners, disabled people on Virginia Lake. And, um, we've had two crashes. One was a car that was on its roof right in front of my unit, who was a DUI driver. And she hit a car and it turned her over on her roof. And the other one crashed into another car because he was looking at his phone. Um, I tried to cross at the crosswalk the other day and the woman came at me and I looked at her like I'm standing here. She went right in front of me. No license plate on her car.
Well, let me ask you this. To wrap up, what would, would you like us to do something?
Some, something about either those flashing signs at the crosswalk and some speed bumps.
Excellent.
That would be perfect.
I think you've been in communication with the mayor and, and I got a copy of a correspondence too. Um, this will be coming into Ward Two again, I think, although I think actually this may be in Ward Three, this road. Mr. Martinez, we'll have to talk that over. But, um, anyway, we hear you and thank you for being here and thank you for being so very passionate about pedestrian safety.
Yeah.
And car safety.
Yes. It's so, it's so scary.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Um,
I, I just say I have not seen any communication with her. Um, I'm happy to, um, you know, jump in and help anywhere that I can. I would like some clarification since the redistricting of whose ward this is. Typically in the past, I believe it was your ward, um, and you've done a great job advocating in that area. Uh, so if you could get me, um, you know, who will be the new representative over there?
I'm going to give you almost a hundred percent that this particular area now, as of November, right? Currently it's in Ward One to my knowledge, and, and then it will shift to Ward Three.
And if I could add, because I've represented that for the little bit of time is, that may be a higher volume road that has RTC responsibility. It's a collector. So it may be something that maybe our RTC representatives should focus on also.
Okay. I think that, that's a great point. Uh, so I'm happy to, uh, I would just ask, Madam Clerk, please get me all the information to possibly, um, because I, I agree with her. Um, I'm over there quite a bit and we definitely need to get some police presence. We need to get some modification on those roads to slow it down. Um, so I'm happy to. I just wanted to clarify, I had not seen any correspondence. Um, but, and I also know that it was a little challenging to figure out who's representing over there because there is that weird area where it does like fall into Ward One and then it's, but anyway, um, that's nor here nor there, but happy to, you know, take the song because I, I can exactly, uh, identify with what she's saying because I've seen it firsthand. And, um, I brought up the issue in other areas around there, but she is exactly right. So happy to jump in.
All right, Madam Mayor.
I just want to, excuse me, I just want to share, I just looked up the ward. It looks like the very northeast end is going to be in Ward Three, but maybe the portion, a portion of where we're talking about is going to be in Ward Two. And I also wanted to share that Public Works apparently is already on the job looking at traffic calming as we speak. Apparently they've, um, already started that process. So you have been heard. We had another writer, I think I got confused, Madam Mayor, you can, um, communicated with another writer, um, about the same issue, um, or last week, I think.
I, I, I didn't think it was, um, this particular public commenter. So I just want, but I have been, um, doing work in that area. So, uh, very helpful work from the public.
Yeah. It, it looks like our two wards will meet right between the two apartment complexes that we're speaking about. So, okay. Anyway, thank you so much for being here. It's definitely something of concern. Um, and let me ask now, we'll, we'll turn our attention to adjournment and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, for Ms. Taylor, second for Mr. Martinez. All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He always votes on adjourn.